Please rise, we're going to start the meeting. Please rise as we salute O'Glory. Right hand over your heart and let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the five of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we have Ms. Ethel Mosby, a deaconess, First Church of Center of Hope, to give us a prayer of our food and this meeting.
Good morning. Is everyone feeling well? This is a great day that the Lord has made and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless His holy name. Father God, I ask a blessing upon this meeting and let it go well. And Father, we don't want an irremess and an attention and a burden. Father, we just want to listen, be contented, ask questions that can be answered and not with an attitude. And Father, just let it run real good. And we'd like for it to run as well as our homes are in real good. I thank you for your blessings this morning, that you woke us all up this morning with the blood running warm in our veins and we thank you for that. We didn't have to wait on a nurse or a doctor. We was able to walk out ourselves, get ready and get here on time. And let it just be good, Father, and all of the things and questions that we have, if it is possible, let them be answered. And if it isn't, later, maybe we can get the questions answered. I thank you for everyone's that's standing under the sound of my voice. I pray a special blessing on their homes and on the things that we need. And then, Father, before taking my seat, we want to pray for these Arabians that are fallen, these ones that are lost and all of these things that's going on in the world that's not happening in America, but we got to bind together and continue to pray because whatever might be disappeared, those peoples on those plans was created by you, just as they are, just as we are by you. They didn't ask me to preach, he asked me to pray and I'm going to say amen, amen and amen.
Well, please be seated. Thank you so much. All right, I call that a blessing. How about you? Thank you so much. A little housekeeping as we get started. For those that do not know me, I am the Ralph Franklin City Councilman for the District Four. This is your town hall meeting. Again, this is your town hall meeting and the theme for this town hall meeting is the best preparation for our future is the present. And your presence here today clearly identifies that you have interest in getting information that we want to share with you throughout the city and also particularly regarding items concerning District Four. I will also acknowledge to you that two things are going to happen, that there will be a presentation by the presenter and then approximately a couple of minutes will be allowed for question and answer. So be sure that you have your questions in line. Again, make sure you have your pens and pencils, pencils, pens and pencils and paper available to take notes so that way you can ask questions further with more detail. One of the reasons that we're here is because we want to hear about key items that's going on in the city, particularly as a global aspect as well as local aspect on how it impacts District Four but also the city at large. And I thought it'd be appropriate that we also talk about, show me the money. Where is the money? And I thought it'd be fair and fitting, because I've heard that a lot at some of the council meetings, where is the money? Where is the money? Well, I brought you our treasurer who has been asked to join us and has volunteered graciously to come and show us where the money is and also share with us some additional information. So please help me welcome our distinguished city treasurer, Ms. Wanda Brown.
And I know we, I just want to say just a couple of words. I know we're just so happy about how we see our cities progress within these last two years under our mayor and council, with the farm going so well and the Hollywood Tomorrow Project going so well and the streets are being paved, trees are being trimmed. I am just elated. Our whole area was paved last week and I know they're going to be working on other areas of the, of the city as they progress. Well, I brought with me today three items. One is the treasurer's report, which really discloses all of the funds. And we're going to be talking also about my city treasurer's student intern program, which is a program that I started roughly about eight years ago where I bring kids in after school between the ages of 11 and 17, 18, from the sixth grade to the 12th grade and teach them about city government and finances. Now, those are not on your, on the table, but they are on the outside table for those of you may have an interest in it. And the third thing I will be talking about will be an upcoming community financial workshop because I had so many parents that was actually sit in on my city treasurer's student intern program until a number of them asked me to put a program together for the community. So basically, that program, that agenda, tentative agenda is also on the outside table. And we'll be talking about a number of things like reverse mortgages, pros and cons. A lot of people think that those are a panacea, they're not. We'll be talking about insurance, whole life insurance versus term insurance, homeowner's insurance, kinds of coverages and how to determine which is better, importance of updating your homeowner's policy and the rule of 72, which is really explains how money grows and the pros and cons of annuities and establishing educational plans for young people and also avoiding scams. And generally, when you hear something that sounds too good to be true, it generally is. Okay, so if you'll now refer to the treasurer's report, we're going to talk about the city's money. And this report is as of May 31st. We normally get our, our records, they're used about a month, a month delayed. Okay, now let's take a look at the city of Inglewood. We have different kinds of, of funds that I do oversee. We have our checking account that we're used, of course, to, to pay the bills. We have our savings, which is just a minor account where a number of smalls amount of money go into. And we have the money market account. We have the local agency investment fund. And what's a local agency investment fund is that's a state fund and that particular fund has more than $60 billion in it. And that's where I store money for, like emergencies. For example, if I have like $80 million to invest, I'm not going to invest all 80 million. I'm going to keep a certain percentage of that funds, you know, in, in a place where the city can pull in event of an emergency. So local agent investment fund is where we have over $27 million. And we have bond securities. And, and those are the bonds that I have invested in. And I primarily invest in, in agencies, GSCs, these are government sponsored enterprises. And I invest in million dollar denominations. And I normally start, you know, do the investing primarily from the home because I have a number of brokers that start calling me as early as seven in the morning up until about 11:30 a.m. And we'll go through the details of some of these later on. And we have bond, bond proceeds and money that we have with fiscal agents. And these are, these are bonds that the, that the city, the former redevelopment agents or the successor agents has issued. So these, these monies are actually with our fiscal agent. So that's under the category of the city of Inglewood. And then we have the total cash and investments for the city. And that's $98,948,408. So those are the different categories of, of monies that I do oversee for that one particular entity. And as you can see, there are four different entities and that's, and that, and these categories apply to all of the other four entities also. The successor agency, you might recall, that is basically a form of redevelopment agency. And as you know, we've had a number of redevelopment projects, you know, throughout the entire city and all of the projects that's on Century and throughout the city, you see, is formerly done under redevelopment. And then we have the housing authority and we have the public finance authority. And all total, as you can see, we have $98,713,438 for the successor agency. And for the housing authority, $100,0625. Public finance authority, $13,496,731. And all total, there's $211,259,202 that I do, that I do oversee. And if you look further in the report, we'll have the interest that's, that's been earned and it says debt service. So that's the interest that has been earned to pay the interest, you see, on the debt. And the last category is the interest that has been generated, you know, for, for these very different categories of funds that I oversee. And if you look at the very bottom, you'll see, I'll give you some information regarding the earnings for May 31st, 2014, which has been $45,621. And the investment earnings, interest earnings for the fiscal year 2013, 14 to date amounted to $391,703. And since I have served as your treasurer, I've been blessed to serve as your treasurer since 1987, I have earned more than $76 million in, in earnings, you know, for the city. And I can probably see I have never really, never lost any of the funds because these are not my funds, of course, these are your tax dollars. And what I have to keep in mind in investing your tax dollars is safety first, to make sure that I don't lose any of the principal and liquidity, meaning that I don't want to invest the funds so far out until we might need the funds and I might have to, you know, liquidate something prematurely. And lastly, of course, is yield or, or earnings. It is not my job really to earn the most amount of money, but it's my job to earn the most amount of money as safely as I can do that. And that's what I do. I've always been a very conservative person, but we've had a number of cities that have not actually done that. For example, you might recall Orange County, they lost more than $1.3 billion of the investment portfolio. And a treasurer in San Jose lost more than $60 million in losses in their investment portfolio. Camarilla, $15 million. And Montebello had a brand new treasurer that was elected and lost the entire portfolio within the first 60 days of office because he invested it too far out, like five years. And they needed the funds, excuse me, to pay bills. So he lost the entire portfolio during his first 60 days in office. So it's very important to, to remember whose dollars these are and you want to be as safe as you can. So I invest primarily, again, in, in government sponsored enterprises, things like farm credit, federal home loan bonds, Fannie and Freddie, Freddie may I invest in those. And keep in mind, Fannie and Freddie backs most of the mortgages that many of you may have. And that's more than about 55% of all of the mortgages. So it's, it is very highly unlikely the government will not, of course, allow them to fail. And they're doing quite well now. They've earned quite a lot of interest. And so I have to be, you know, extremely safe in that regard. And keep in mind, I also invest in CDs also from time to time. Quite often I will try and help some of the local banks and I will put funds in, in the banks. But again, I generally will not put more than $250,000 in any local bank unless they're able to provide collateralization for anything above $250,000 because otherwise those funds could be at risk, you see. But I have invested upwards to about $600,000 to $700,000 in some of our local banks in order to, you know, help, help that particular local bank. But again, the funds have to be collateralized and whenever they're not able to collateralize the funds, then I have to, I have to redeem those funds and, and put them back in our investment portfolio. So it's important I try to help, you know, the local, the local banks also. And if you'll look at the second page of this handout, you can see I, we have a, a diagram where you can see how the funds are allocated, you know, by different category. Because we get most of our funds primarily from, from utility taxes, property taxes and sales taxes. That's where the bulk of the, of the funds do come from. And these funds that I am investing are basically like idle funds. So we're, that's why I normally will invest these primarily in bonds. And interest rates, as you know, is very, very low now for like a five-year bond. Sometimes I'm not able to get much more than 1.3, 1.5 or sometimes no more than 2% interest because interest rates are so low. But rates are about to start going up now. But basically, if you put something in, in a CD in a bank or in a savings account in a bank, you're getting next to nothing. So basically, we are getting some earnings, you see, from the funds. So this gives, gives a breakdown, you know, of, of how the funds are invested. And again, with regards to some of the local banks, as you know, more than 500 of banks throughout the nation, of course, have failed and have lost more than, I have here, more than $701 billion of total assets for these particular banks. $701 billion. And the loss to the FDIC has been more than $96 billion for these failed banks and more than 500 banks throughout our nation, you know, have failed. And most of the banks with the bailout, there's more than $245 billion that was given, as you might recall, to save some of these banks. Now, all of the big banks, of course, have paid their money back, but the smaller banks have not and they still owe more than $11 billion. And in all likelihood, they're, they're not going to be able to repay those dollars. And if you'll look at the third page, it has the pooling cash investment liquidity in days. Normally, when I buy bonds, I will buy bond like a five-year bond that may have one years of call protection, meaning that that bond is not going to be taken away from me for at least one year. And I usually like at least six months to one year of call protection before the bond is taken away. So I will at least be able to earn at least one years of interest. Then I, of course, will reinvest that bond, invest those same funds again over and over and over. But generally, it's kind of tough to get more than one year to two years of call protection before the issuer of that bond will, you know, will redeem that bond. And generally, there's no commissions paid by the city, of course, for any of these bonds that I do invest. The commissions are always paid by the issuer of the bond. So that's how the brokers earn their living is through commissions paid by whomever issued the bond that they are selling to the city. Now, if you look at the page that has the, all the listing of the type of investments, you'll see here how I'm investing your tax dollars. These are the kinds of, of instruments that I'm investing your tax dollars, as I mentioned, federal farm credit, federal home loan bonds, Freddie and Fannie Mae. This is how every single bond that I have invested is invested. And you'll see the next column that gives the Moody's rating. And of course, we, we can't get a rating higher than double A now because a federal government, as you might recall, was downgraded. So double A is the best you can get for the, for the bond. So I now have it double A on, on all of these bonds. And it gives you the coupon rate or it shows you the amount of interest that is being earned, you know, for your, for your dollars. And you'll see that the interest rates vary anywhere from the lowest .2 all the way down to almost 2%, which is the very last bond. And so that gives you the complete breakdown. Now, just want you to focus also on the last two columns, the cost and the market value. It's mandatory that the market value, which is what I would get if I had to redeem the bond today and the cost basis is what, which is the basis that was invested, you'll see there's a difference. But again, these bonds are bought to be held to maturity. So there's no loss, there's never incurred a loss during the 27 years that I have been blessed to serve as your treasurer. So I certainly have enjoyed doing my job and letting know if you have any questions.
Just a couple of questions or comments to our treasurer. We found the money, we're balanced, haven't lost a penny, you heard that? I think that's worth another hand for over 20 years, right?
Thank you.
And then also, I want to bring up one of my friends that believed to become a person of labor of love. I met this person early on in her young life through her mother, but since then, when she expressed interest to want to be part of our community, she rolled up her sleeves with me when I was doing one of the five projects that we did in the city and it had to do with community beautifications in our school districts. For those that remember, in March through May, we were able to do not one, not two, but five locals' schools on which we did campus beautifications. And this young lady, I thought she was there for photo op only, but found out that she was like me, grabbed a pickaxe, got muddy and dirty, put sweat on her brow and said, "I'm here to make a difference for our community" and that she worked diligently at our Benet Cue Elementary School when we did the planting of flowers, et cetera. So I just want to recognize her and see if she'll say a few comments. It's the daughter of our distinguished LA County Supervisor, District Two, Yvonne Rathwaig Burt. Please help me welcome Autumn Burt. And you'll find also she's in our recycling center packet that just went out to you. Ms. Burt?
Thank you, Councilman Franklin. Good morning, everybody. You can do better. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, there you go. First of all, yes, I had the great pleasure of being allowed to participate in the beautification of some of the schools in Inglewood. And I have done work like that in the community for a really long time, but this was a great opportunity to really, like you said, get my hands dirty. I, I'm a Home Depot girl. They provided, they provided the flowers and the soil and the picks. And really, at this point in our education system, it's, it's really, really important that we have not only good quality schools, that's our first priority, especially as a candidate for state office, we need to make sure that we have quality schools. We want people to want to move to our community because our schools are so good. And part of that is having a beautiful campus, having a campus where kids want to come to. So that is really, really important to me. I also wanted to mention about Wanda Brown and the treasurer. It is so important to have transparency. We have seen so many cities and states lose money because we were not transparent. And so Inglewood is so lucky to have somebody who will stay here, stand here and show you every dollar of where our money is going. And as a state, as someone who's running for the state, when I give monies to cities and cities in this community, I want to make sure it's going to the community. So I want to thank Wanda, I want to thank Councilman Franklin and I want to thank all of you for participating and being an active member in your community. It is so important and as we see Inglewood grow and change, it's really the people in this room that have started that. So thank you again.
Okay, as I said at the beginning, make sure you have a pen and paper so you can take notes because I'm now going to give you the District Four Town Hall talking points of things that you want to make note of that will not be in the handouts, but yet it will be made available via DVD if you want to get a copy of it or rent, I'm sorry, get a free use of the DVD at our Police Community Center. So I'll give you a couple of seconds and we'll just start off. Okay, here we go. City of Inglewood programs, events and news. The city of Inglewood is hosting movies in the park, which should be your flyer that you have right here. On Saturday, August 9th, the movie will be Despicable Me Too at Darby Park. And on Saturday, August 23rd, at Inglewood City, City Hall on the South Lawn, the movie will be frozen. All movies are free, the gates are open at 6:30 p.m. and the movies start at 8:00 p.m. Bring 10 recyclable items to receive a free popcorn voucher. Refreshments will be available for purchase. For additional information on the movies in the park, please pick up the information card from the information table, which I just showed you. Effective Monday, July 21st, the city's waiting pools located at Darby Park, Ed Vinson Park, Rogers Park and Ash Park were taken out of service in compliance with the requirement of to achieve the 20% water usage reduction by the emergency drought regulations for urban water agencies. The pools consumed up to 200,000 gallons of water each week as they are filled and drained daily. During the July 22nd City Council meeting, Mayor James T. Butts made comments regarding the great progress being made in the city of Inglewood, including sound installation of over 1,000 homes, 100% increase in building permits, 16 new businesses have opened in Jan, in Inglewood since January of this year and just over $1 million has been secured for resurfacing city streets, which includes areas in District Four. In preparation for the MTV Music Awards, please refer to this particular flyer that I made available for you, that as of the MTV Award Music Awards is scheduled for Sunday, August 24th. And for safety reasons, the farm parking lot will be closed to walkers and joggers beginning Tuesday, August 5th through Wednesday, August 27th. Community members are welcome to use sidewalks surrounding the farm, which will be open and available. For more information, again, please pick up a copy of the flyer at the information table. The city of Inglewood and the Consolidated Disposal Services have partnered to offer the residents of Inglewood a safe and convenient way to dispose of sharps, needles and lansets. So you should have received in your flyers, available for pickup, this item here. And then this is the item that is made available for free for those individuals that are in need of disposing their sharps, needles and lansets. The Sharp Disposal Program is free to residents and can call the Consolidated Disposal Service at this number, 1-800-299-4898. Again, Sharp's disposable program, free. You can call the Consolidated Disposal Service at 1-800-299-4898 to request your Sharp disposable container, again, free of charge. And once the container is filled, it can be mailed back postage prepaid. For, for more information of the program, again, just pick up the flyer. On June 17th, the city council approved an agreement with the Housing Rights Center to provide fair housing counseling and housing discrimination services. The city is contracting with the Housing Rights Center to provide the following: housing discrimination, intake and investigations; community outreach and education on equal housing laws and regulations; housing rights counseling, walk-in clinics for landlords and tenants; fair housing workshops in the city to discuss fair housing issues with landlords and tenants and dispute, I'm sorry, dispute resolutions, conciliations and legal services for landlord/tenant housing disputes. For those that do not have access to the Time Water Cable, Channel 35, you can view this as well as other prior District Four Town Hall meetings via YouTube link on the city website, which is www.cityofinglewood.org. For those of you who do not have access to, to or use a computer, a master DVD of each Town Hall meeting is provided by the District Four ICOP Center and is available free for checkout for you to view with family or your block club. The District Four ICOP Center is located at 2666 West Imperial Highway in the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center. And you can speak with Mr. Aaron Elzie, E-L-Z-I-E, our ICOP Center liaison at the center by calling the following number, 310-330-5346. Again, the Police Community Center is, number is 310-330-5346 or stop by Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Our job opportunities email list has been in place for almost three years and we have experienced tremendous success. Thank you to the many individuals, organizations and churches who are taking the time to pass this information along to family members, neighbors, customers and members. For those of you who have an interest in being added to our jobs list, can provide your name, email address on the sign-in sheet or contact my, my assistant, Ms. Claudette Matthews, at our district office, which is 310-412-8605. Again, my office is 310-412-8605. The next slide I want to talk about has to do with Hollywood Park Life or Hollywood Park Development. Again, this flyer here is what you should have, which talks about job opportunities and the construction process and what's going on in the city. On Ju, on July 22nd, the city of Inglewood has set a public hearing to consider a zone change to reinstate and expand the CR Zone to facilitate the relocation of the Hollywood Park Casino, where we are now, is subject to be relocated. where we are now is subject to be relocated, and the hearing is set for Tuesday, August 12th. The Hollywood Park Life, also known as Hollywood Park Tomorrow, proposes to construct a new facility to house the casino and demolish the existing casino facility on the Hollywood Park site. During the relocation process, the casino operations will continue in its original facility. Public Works Projects. At the June 3rd City Council meeting, the Public Works Department recommended, and the City Council approved the agreement, with Huntson-Galveston Air Council for the purchase for—of an asphalt zipper. The asphalt zipper is a machine attached that is used to mill asphalt pavement surfaces and recycle its material into new basement—base material, which can then be resurfaced with new asphalt. This machine provides a noticeable increase in productivity with jobs that would normally take three days beginning completion within hours. And I also want to stress there, because we're now able to start doing more work internally by the use of this asphalt zipper for those that are living in the Century Heights area, Inglewood Knolls area, there's areas specifically I'm identifying, particularly the alleys, which haven't been done in decades, and so that will now help me get funds set aside and hopefully in next year's budget of 2014-15. So please make a note of that. Due to some inter-agency coordination challenges between the City of Inglewood, the L.A. County Public Works Department, which is our lead agency, and the California Department of Transportation, which is known as Caltrans, Caltrans has finally issued the final construction permits for the Van S Avenue Street Improvement Project, and the project is now moving forward. As construction schedules are subject to change, the latest information that we have on the next project—for this project—is that construction will begin on May 2015, literally a year later than what we had anticipated it to be done, all because of the delays that we have dealt with through Caltrans. And when you deal with multiple agencies, everyone has their own agenda, and it's a matter of me working with the agencies to try to keep our projects as their priority. So we're now going to have the construction begin in May of 2015. At this time, the Imperial Highway Street Improvement Project is now scheduled for the budget year of 2015-16, and is contingent upon the L.A. County Public Works fiscal year, which goes from June 30th of 2014—I'm sorry, 2015—to July 1st, 2016. So again, the Imperial Highway Project is still on track, but it will be between the L.A. County Public Works budget year of June 30th, 2015, to July 1st, 2016. Earthquake retrofit activities are in process and at the future site of the warehouse shoes sale located at the southeast corner of Crenshaw Boulevard and Century Boulevard. Representatives from the city's Storm Runoff Investigation Unit are regularly monitoring the site and the surrounding area, including streets, sidewalks, and center mediums for flying dust particles. Current time estimates for the removal of the dirt piles is set to end by September 2014. Now I'll talk a little about code enforcement. We have been working with Auburndale Properties, property owners of Food For Less Shopping Center located at Crenshaw Boulevard and Century Boulevard, to address the trash and debris that collects in the grassy area on the east side of the 99-cent store, as well as the overall cleanliness and appearance of the shopping center. They have shared their property maintenance schedule with us, and they have committed to do the following. The entire property is thoroughly swept every evening, the liner bags and the traction receptacles are changed out at least twice a week, landfill and full grooming of the property is conducted once a week with grooming the first week, irrigation the following week, grooming again the third week, and so on. Trashcan lids are wiped down twice a week, sidewalks are steam cleaned once a week. Again, I want to stress that is on the shopping center's site specifically. Upon a recent visit that I've taken along with my assistant, Clyde Matthews, we discovered two areas of note that requires our city to improve. An unauthorized business called Telscape had set up a canopy on the sidewalk next to the bus stop near the 99-cent store. Code enforcement directed them to close down, they complied, but the next day they set back up again. This time, code enforcement arrived along with the Inglewood Police Department and issued citation to each individual, and they have not returned. The trash bins at each bus stop have metal dome lids on them. You remember that? They're green, and then you have this green dome across. It was discovered that both lids have been removed and possibly recycled for scrap metal. The city's Public Works Department is currently working on replacing the lids and installing anti-theft devices to prevent future theft. Now for the Inglewood Police Department, public safety, quality of life issues. The Inglewood Police Officers detained an 18-street gang member for spray painting a wall with a spray can in the area of 107th Street and Doty. The male was later taken into custody. Several Inglewood Police Department units responded to Burlington Coal Factory's parking lot at Crenshaw Boulevard and Imperial Highway, where more than 300 car clubber vehicles were heard playing loud music, racing around and burning out. Once the police department arrived, car clubbers dispensed and moved out of the city. The Inglewood Police Department Officers responded to grand theft auto in progress at 112th Street and Prairie. A foot pursuit followed, and the suspect was arrested. The Inglewood Police Officers responded to a two-vehicle traffic collision at the intersection of 116th Street and Crenshaw Boulevard, where one vehicle sheared off a fire hydrant, but no criminal activity was suspected. The Inglewood Police Officers—the Inglewood Police Department Officers responded to an alarm robbery called at 110,000 Block of 112th Street. The victim met the suspects on a chat line and later showed up at their home, entered the victim's home and took cell phones in case. Suspects are still at large. Again, I want to stress, a chat line call resulted in the victim—the person becoming a victim because they went to their home and took their personal property. Inglewood Police Department received a call from Hawthorne PD that approximately 400 to 500 car clubbers were headed into the northbound on Crenshaw Boulevard. The Inglewood Police Department responded and diverted them onto the eastbound 105 freeway, and the California Highway Patrol were notified and provided extra patrol in the area. The car clubbers did not return. The Inglewood Police Department Officers responded to jaywalking pedestrians who was hit by a vehicle traveling eastbound on Imperial Highway near Yukon Avenue. The pedestrian suffered major head trauma and is listed in critical but stable condition. The driver remained at the scene, and driving uninfluenced was not a factor. Critical, we have walking crosswalks for a reason. If you jaywalk, you're putting yourself in harm's way. Please be careful. The Inglewood Police Officer responded to a shooting victim at the 3700 Block of 111 Place. The victim was walking with her mother and two three-year-old nephews when she was shot in the buttocks. The injury was non-life-threatening, and the wound was determined to be inflicted by either a BB gun or a pellet gun. Suspicious suspects were observed on the roof of the Food For Less located at the 3700 Block of West Century Boulevard. The Los Angeles Sheriff's Department airship responded to a roof check and located three suspects hiding on the roof. Suspects were in the process of vandalizing the business, and all three suspects were arrested. The Inglewood Police Department Community Affairs has been very successful in their efforts to address and resolve issues related to the homeless and homeless encampments in our community. Homeless encampments impact the image and the quality of life in our community, and our Inglewood Police Department has endeavored to address this challenging issue with kindness and compassion. Several individuals have been relocated from the streets and relocated to the appropriate facilities where they can receive the treatment and care they need. The most recent success included a woman who was encamped off and on along the medium at Imperial Highway and Ardenth Avenue, along with a gentleman with the enormous shopping cart at the 108th Street and Crenshaw Boulevard. The Inglewood Police Department is currently working with a woman stationed at the strip mall at 109th Street and Crenshaw Boulevard. There's another gentleman who has set up at the bus stop at the northeast corner of Central Boulevard and Prairie Avenue, and two men with their shopping carts on 108th Street and Prairie Avenue. We're hopeful there will be more successful stories for those individuals willing to accept permanent housing in a very, very near future. And I want to stress, homeless has rights as well. If their will is not desirous to relocate, it becomes a challenge for us to be able to enforce the quality of life that may be impacting your lifestyle. And then finally, I want you to be made aware, and the flyer has been made available for you, that on June 25, 2014, there was a special bulletin that was released through the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control that the Alcohol Beverage Control Agents post revocation notice at Inglewood Liquor Store, and it reads as follows. Agents from the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control have taken action by prohibiting a liquor store on Crenshaw Boulevard in Inglewood from selling alcoholic beverages. A notice of revocation has been posted at Jen's Liquor, 11001 Crenshaw Boulevard in the City of Inglewood. Today's action means the location is prohibited from selling alcoholic beverages. ABC initiated an investigation after numerous alcohol-related crimes involving such violations as loitering and public drunkenness, and some violent crimes, including three separate shootings. The Department reviewed numerous calls for service and police reports that occurred between January 2009 and March 2011. Those reports substantiated claims that the operation of the business and crime surrounding it had become a drain on police resources. Based on the accumulation and severity of the crime activity, an acquisition—accusation was filed against the licensee for operating a disorderly business on the premises. In addition, Jen's Liquor was caught selling alcohol to minors three separate times in recent years in various undercover minor decoy operations run by the Inglewood Police Department. Ultimately, the Department revoked the license based on the sale to the minors. All appeals of this revocation has been exhausted. Assistant Director Beth Goldberg said, "This is an outstanding example of two agencies working together to achieve a common goal. This action will undoubtedly have a positive impact on this community." Inglewood Police Chief Mark Frontarada said, "I would like to thank ABC for their collaborative efforts in assisting the Inglewood Police Department with the ruling that ultimately led to revocation of Jen's Liquor to sell alcoholic beverages. Jen's Liquor Store has been a source of controversy, generating many community complaints in the city for years. The results of this welcome decision will improve the quality of life of the immediate neighborhood and the community for all citizens." Again, ABC is the Department of Business, Consumer Services, and Housing Agency. That concludes my talking points. At this time, I think it's a great segue to now lead you into the men that you see out in the field that have made a difference to our quality of life that you just heard me read earlier today. Please help me recognize our lieutenant, Mark Freed of the Inglewood Police Department. Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a tough act to follow with all that. I'm going to do my best, and I'm going to take my cellphone out, and I'm not going to be on it. I've got a timer on here. He's got me on a—Councilman's got me on a short clock, so I'm going to get that going so—because I'll go for a half hour if I don't start this, so forgive me. What I'm going to try to do is talk a little bit about crime in District Four. The map is representative of the area we're talking about. I'm going to try to compare District Four to the other districts, so to give you sort of an idea about how crime in District Four compares to the other—to the remainder—the other districts in the city. And it's—the information I'm using is available to all of you. Some of you may have visited the website, crimemapping.com. Anybody been to it? Okay. That information's there. It's available to you. I'm using the same data. Now I have access to the police database, which has individual crime reports. I can drill down on it. It's confidential information. I can go in and look at victim information, suspect information. But essentially, you have access to the same information. So what I'm talking about is available to you. We were talking about transparency earlier. You can verify anything I'm saying by going to the website. Also, so omegaGIS.com, you can get to crimemapping.com, but any of those sites you can go to, click on, enter in your address, enter in a street, enter in a timeframe, and you can look at crime in and around where you actually live, on your street. It's worth looking at if you get a chance. The technology we have today is amazing, and it really gives you an idea of what's going on in your neighborhood. But for the sake of clarity, I've had a few people call me and say, "Lieutenant, there's a lot of burglaries on Century. What's going on? We got a crime wave down there." Well, unfortunately, we stat burglaries, we show them—we have—we show indicators on the map, there's burglaries, but in our minds, we create a vision of somebody climbing through our bedroom window and stealing a television. Not always the case. So when you look at those, don't be frightened. If you have questions, feel free to email me. My email's on the website. It's mfreid@cityofinglewood.org. You can email me if you have a question. I'm happy to answer it. I'll answer your emails. When you see them, I don't want you to be overly shocked at the numbers. Now, the numbers aren't high, but in some areas you'll go, "Why is there so many burglaries in that area?" And I'll try to explain that. So if you look at District Four compared to other districts, the overall crime in District Four year-to-date is higher than last year by a very slight number. We're higher, 3.6% higher this year than we were last year. Now, that's almost statistically insignificant, which means we're the same as we were last year. And you know, our crime stats overall are down—they've really never been lower since the late '70s. I mean, crime has just never been lower, when you're looking at it. And in a position now, in the 21st century, where it's so easy to make a crime report, we'll come out to the house, you come to us, we take them, and we use technology, we use computer systems to write crime reports, so the information's uploaded every 24 hours. So when a police officer takes a crime report, within 24 hours, it's uploaded into the system, and you can see it on the website. So there's no lag time. It doesn't sit in somebody's mailbox for three or four days, which has happened in years past. I mean, we'd eventually get to it, but the information is uploaded almost instantaneously, and we get a good picture of what's going on in the neighborhoods. So it's a—crime is essentially the same as it was year-to-date in 2013, it is today. Now, how does that compare to the rest of the city? Well, District Three, which has the least population, which is actually Council District One, is down 4.4% compared to District Four, but Districts Two and Three are up. District Two is higher, at 6.8%, and District Three is up, 6.2%. But those numbers are low. Those are single-digit increases, and they're year-to-date. So we'd have to look at it for a whole year before we get really concerned about it. And I was looking—if I spent three hours this morning looking at the data, because I wanted to have the freshest data for you, and there just isn't any patterns. And what—that's what we look for, is patterns, clusters, when we see in residential neighborhoods or in commercial districts, something that we don't expect to see. Frankly, the City of Inglewood is an urban neighborhood. There's well over 100,000 people living here. We're in metropolitan Los Angeles County. We have significant business districts that bring people in, and unfortunately, crime tends to be a little higher in those. For example, if you go to the Food For Less—the Councilman was talking about the Food For Less—if someone goes in and steals pork chops—which happens—it stats as a burglary or a theft. So that can artificially raise the crime stats in that neighborhood, and you'll be looking at it, say, "There's 35 burglaries in our neighborhood." No, it's not 35 residential burglaries. We had 35 commercial burglaries, but those were related to the business, aren't necessarily going to affect the entire neighborhood. Okay? Because when you have a large population and you have people that come from all over, those stores get—there's a lot of shoplifters, things get stolen out of there, and—but it doesn't affect you living in your home four blocks away, necessarily. I mean, they're not related, is my point. I mean, we think one crime is one too many, frankly, and I think all—everybody in this room would agree. At the Police Department, we're trying to get down to zero. Now, that may seem like a lofty goal, but we're going to keep trying to get down to zero. In the last 30 days, crime has been, again, relatively low. There's been—let's see—60—or 51 Part I crimes in Council District Four, and I was looking at all of them, and there's no particular pattern. And some of those—and again, we stat all these crimes, so some of them are going to happen regardless. They would happen wherever—if we were keeping stats in Oregon or we're keeping stats in California—domestic violence, people have landlord-tenant disputes, and they report things stolen or damaged. We stat those crimes the same as we would if you were the victim of a stranger crime, but it's important to know the distinction. It doesn't necessarily mean the neighborhood's at risk, or that there's a significant increase in crime. It's just unfortunately, when you have a lot of people together, sometimes bad things happen. happen. And that's essentially what the pattern shows me. What I did break down is, and I don't know if anybody, for the purposes of conversation, we report Part 1 crimes to the federal government. Part 1 crimes are murder, rape, robbery, burglary, theft, or larceny, arson, motor vehicle theft, and fraud. I know that's a lot to chew on. Fraud, motor vehicle theft, theft and larceny and burglary. Now, that sounds like all the same thing. It is and it isn't. But we stat it all the same when we report it to the federal government. But we break it down for the purposes of enforcement, and trying to understand what's going on in the neighborhoods. And when I was looking at Districts 4, I found a couple of interesting things. I want to talk a little bit about what I noticed, and give you some tips on how to stay safe with respect to these crimes. Murder, there wasn't any significant change. The last events we had in District 4 were in April. And without going into a lot of details, because I'm not at liberty to do that, those were what we believe were gang-related. There's no, the rapes that were reported to us were not stranger rapes. And the robberies that were reported to us were on major thoroughfares in District 4. And it's something to, when I did drill down on this and look at it, what I found was they were on major thoroughfares, and most involved cell phones and juries. Something to remember, all of you should be wary when you're out in public and you're talking on a mobile phone, and we all carry these. They are targeted. There is a segment of criminals that see this phone, and they can get money for it. You know, you can go to malls and drop these in a receptacle and get cash for them. Also, you can pull the SIM cards out of them, and you can put new cards in them. And there's money to be had, it's cash. So you have to be very careful when you're talking about those iPhones. The Apple, I have an Android phone, not as popular, okay? But if you have an iPhone, Apple iPhones are very popular. Also, gold jewelry being displayed, you can become a target. So you should be careful and mindful that we have had some robberies in District 4. And just to be on the safe side, you should probably avoid flaunting jewelry, or wearing it openly, if at all possible. And also, I would avoid, if you're out in public, displaying your phone unnecessarily. Obviously, you've got to talk on it, you've got to use it, I understand. But there has been some robberies. Also, but there's no particular pattern of neighborhood, or victim, or suspect. I would just tell you that that's an overall trend. Now, there has been some burglaries. We've had 62 total in District 4. It's interesting to note that the majority of those are daytime. Forty-six were daytime, 16 were nighttime. It's important to lock your houses and take precautions during the daytime. Now, I have an alarm system on my home. It's a deterrent. It's not going to stop a determined burglar, but it will be a deterrent. They give you an alarm sign, whatever company you pick, put an alarm sign in the front yard. When a burglar goes up to the house, he or she goes into the windows, they look, maybe they see the alarm sensor, they see the stickers on the window, they go pick another house. That's the reality. Alarms are deterrent. And very oftentimes, your homeowner's insurance will give you a discount on that. So it's something to think about. We recommend that on the police department. And we say, "Look out for your neighbors." If you see something suspicious, please call us. Does everybody know the non-emergency number for the Inglewood Police Department? It's 310-412-8771. That's 310-412-8771. That number rings into the Communications Division of the Police Department. Those are the 911 operators. What they do is they'll hear what you have to say, they'll evaluate what you're telling them, and they'll place what's called a "call for service," and they'll send police units out. And they'll be entering that information. As you're talking to them, you'll hear them typing on a computer terminal. They're sending that right out. Soon as that goes into what's called a queue, then it goes out to the radio cars in the field, and it's managed. And we take them in order of calls received in priority. So please, please give us a call when you see something suspicious. Don't think it's not a problem, or that we don't care. We do care. And let us decide. We're good arbiters of what people are doing and not doing. We're professionals. We know how to behave and treat people. Just because you call us doesn't mean somebody's going to go to jail, or they're going to go into a gang file, or they're under suspicion. We'll come out and talk to them, and let them know that we're out there because a neighbor's called, they saw something suspicious, just wanted to make sure everything was okay. And we shake hands, and we go on to the next call. But sometimes, we catch bad guys when you call us. And we really need your help. Without you, we can't do our job. So that's burglaries and thefts. The councilman asked me to talk about vehicle burglaries. It's interesting, I did drill down on vehicle burglaries. We've had 163 year-to-date. That's a lot. I mean, that's not an epidemic, but like I said, one's too many. And it's interesting to note that 125 of those occur during the day. That's 125 compared to 38 at night. I've read some of those reports, one out of every 10 I went through randomly, and nine out of 10 of those that I looked at, the car doors were unlocked. So we make it easy for burglars. They walk down the street, and they open doors. So I walk down the street, I reach down, I walk on the sidewalk, maybe I step a little to the corner or the curb, I reach down, I open the door. And I just keep walking until I find an open door. Then I might go back down, circle back around, and come back in, and look around, and go in and take whatever's in the car. Maybe a computer, maybe a cellphone, maybe a radio, maybe money, maybe clothes. The key is, you've got to lock your doors. And if you see somebody going down the block, and they're trying door handles, that's suspicious. Call us. Tell the dispatcher what they look like, what they're doing, how long you watched them, and give us your name and your phone number. Now, you don't, I know you're worried, you don't want to, the police officers aren't going to tell the suspects that we're dealing with who called. But the officers who get to the scene may want to talk to you, like, "What did you see?" And they may want to call you from their police car, they may want to call you on the cellphone. So if you give your number, that'll be on the computer screen, they can call you. They're not going to give that number to people. They're not going to give that to any bad guy we're dealing with. But remember, suspicious activity, don't ignore it. Call us. We need to know about it. This is how we catch these guys. More often than not, they're on parole, probation, they've got warrants for their arrest, they're gang members, we know who they are. And crimes are not committed by innocent individuals who decide one time they're going to do it. More often than not, you find convicted felons, people that do this for a living. There are people out here in our environment that spend all their waking hours deciding how to be predators. It's a fact. Been dealing with them for 24 years. And they're out here, the same way you and I go to work every day, they go to work every day, trying to find a victim. So don't be a victim. Call us. We want to deal with it, okay? I think that's it. This is a 30-minute conversation. I'm sorry, I only had 10. And I know I'm over my time. Questions, or any questions that I can answer for anybody?
Yes.
How's it safer?
The short answer is yes. If you call the Community Affairs Section, they'll put you on a list and arrange for it. We're happy to do that, time permitting, and calls for service permitting, now.
Okay, thank you. Let's give the officer a hand, please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And just one thing before I go. I apologize, I made some commitments that I was going to stay and be able to talk to folks. I apologize, I cannot do that. I wasn't being rude when I was on my cellphone over there. I am the Department's Watch Commander. I act as the police chief when the police chief's not here. There's a lot of activity right now going on over at the forum. I don't know if anybody noticed that. Yeah, there's a boy band, Five Degrees of Summer. I'd never heard of them, but apparently, 4,000 or 5,000 young girls did. And so they're all out there trying to get autographs, and the forums didn't tell us about it. So we've got to go deal with it. We're trying to make sure nobody gets run over out there, because they're all out in the street. So I have to go back to my office, I apologize. Also, one thing, just as advisory, folks, Century and Aviation is shut down. Does everybody know that? It's been for 96 hours, and there's been, I was just listening to some reports, we've got a lot of traffic on feeder streets, including Florence, La Cienega, and Manchester. I would avoid the west side of Inglewood for the next couple of days, if at all possible. There's just, everybody's getting off on Florence and Manchester and trying to get over to the airport, because Century's shut down. So it's just, it's going to be hectic for the next few days. So avoid that area if you want to get through it at any time soon, okay? Okay, take care.
All right. And let's give him another hand, if you would, please. I think it's critical to know our friends. And Lieutenant Freed has been our friend for District 4, Beat 4, for a number of years. And in fact, he's my go-to guy when I have issues specifically involving heightened areas of crime, issues that involve the burglaries and the other comments you've heard earlier, and that he is not afraid to rope his sleeves and come to your block club meetings, he's not afraid to be able to approach issues of quality-of-life issues, whether you're dealing with the neighbors next door, I call them the Hatfield and McCoys, and be able to handle those issues. More importantly, it's one thing that he comes to your events, and comes and contacts me, but more importantly, he follows through. And with the vested authority he has as our lieutenant, he makes sure he carries out those concerns that we have. So again, one more hand for him, if you would, please, Lieutenant. Now that we've covered the issues involving the quality of life issues regarding the public works and crime, et cetera, let's move on to employment opportunities. And also, just so you know, I have another guest speaker that came that I've invited, because when things are happening, the next time I have a town hall meeting, it'll have already passed. And because it affects you directly, I felt it critical that I incorporate this person to give a few minutes regarding what that person wishes to share with us, that you need to take back to your neighborhood and your community as well. But before we do that, we have been very blessed over the years to be able to use the Breeder Cup Room at the Hollywood Park Casino for a number of years. I shared with you recently in my presentation of talking points, that it's just a matter of time before this building will no longer exist. I want to also reach out to the person that has made it happen over the number of years to make sure that we have the quality refreshments, which I hope you enjoy. Do you enjoy the refreshments?
Yeah.
The venue here as well. It's all because this gentleman said, "Councilman, I want to make sure you have one of the best town hall meetings in the city of Inglewood." It's my privilege and pleasure to recognize the General Manager of the Hollywood Park Casino, Mr. Devin Kumar.
Good morning, everybody. Councilman Franklin, thank you very much for the invite. As Councilman Franklin talked about a little bit in his remarks earlier, this building may not exist in a couple of years. You know, we are looking at new opportunities here at the whole Hollywood Park plan. I am in charge of this casino. I am also in charge of helping Hollywood Park Tomorrow develop a new casino, which is one of the things we're talking about that Councilman Franklin brought up, which is going to be something, you know, we're looking at a new facility. We want to really take the level of the casino experience up for the customers, and we want to really make our casino stand out comparable to all the other casinos that we have, that we're competing with. You know, this has been here for a long time, it's historical. We want to take some of that value, incorporate it into a brand-new building that's more efficient, that really will take us to the next level. But that's the future. My concern right now is the present. And this is actually a great time to talk about that, because one of the things that, you know, Councilman Franklin was talking about is that to prepare for the future, you need to deal with the present. And what I'm dealing with right now is, with this development going on, this is going to be a development that will go on for two to five years. You know, it's going to be a long time. But one constant is that the casino will always be open. During construction of a new casino, during construction of what's going on with the race track coming down, new development coming, this casino will always stay open. So my focus is to make sure that we run and operate this casino the most efficiently and the best way possible. To do that, we need to have great employees. And one of the things we're always looking for here at Hollywood Park are great individuals who'd like to come into this industry. It's a different industry, it has different levels. You know, we have over 700 employees employed here. And you know, when we have, start talking about a new building, a new casino, we probably will have even more. But the 700 will still be here, still be here while we're still doing construction, because this operation needs to proceed, needs to stay open, and we want to be successful. It's not about being constant, it's about still getting better. And one of the things, my goal is to, we're building a new casino that's going to make the exterior and the facilities, you know, that much better and compete. But one thing I could do today is make the interior work. And for me, that's really working about the customers, really looking at the customer experience. And that starts with the employees that we have. We have a great set of employees here that help make this property run. It's a 24/7 business. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. We have great individuals that do a lot, and will continue to do a lot. And with that, we're always looking for additional individuals who'd like to come into this industry. We're open for that. We want people who want to come in, enjoy the customer service, get involved. We have different levels, from entry level to management level. We have areas between food and beverage, to housekeeping, to the gaming floor. So one of the things I wanted to talk about today was that those opportunities are still here, and they will continue to be here while construction's going on. So I want to really focus on that, this casino stays open. That's the one constant, that everything else is going on around us, this casino will stay open, and it will, you know, it will continue to succeed. But with that, it takes a lot of good individuals to do it. And one of the things that we always look for is that. And just want to let you know that there are opportunities available, and we really want Inglewood presence here. One of the things that, over the time being that when I've started, our percentage of Inglewood employees has gone from 7% to 15%. I actually believe we have some great people in our community, and I think they show off very well if given the opportunity. And one of the things is, we're giving them that opportunity. And I want to be able to take advantage of that. And from a standpoint with you all here today, just wanted to let you know, friends, family members, anyone, please, we have a website you can go to, you can come to the concierge desk. If people are looking for employment, we'd love to have them come in, we'd love to talk to them, you know, and see what we can do. Any questions on that? It's on the flyer. There's a flyer right outside that has basically the website, and actually talks about it a little bit.
So please sure to get this flyer outside. So if you know anyone's looking for employment here, we want local hiring. Any question or comment from our presenter? C9, thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Also, want to recognize a District 4 resident who's the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission. Please help me recognize Willie Agee. Thank you, Willie Agee. Jobs, jobs, jobs. Let's keep these jobs going. If anyone knows anything about my outreach, I stay in constant contact with Workforce Investment Board, and we actually have a facility right here called the One Stop that's right across the street from City Hall. I'm proud to recognize Mr. David LaSalle of the Job Training and Employment Opportunities. Come on in, David. Give David a hand, please.
Morning, Inglewood. How's everyone this morning? All right, all right. My name is David LaSalle from the South Bay One Stop Business and Career Centers. We are a division of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. We do a myriad of different types of job training programs. We also work with workforce development with our business community in order to match employers and employees. I'd like to thank Councilman Franklin and his staff for inviting us here today. A lot of people know us as the Inglewood One Stop, which is where my office is. I'm on the fifth floor, I work in what's called intensive services, and I'll explain the difference in just a few moments. We have seven locations throughout the South Bay as the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. We also are an administrator for several other programs throughout the southern half of California. Now, with those seven locations, there's five centers dedicated to helping people with job searches, and then we also have a couple of teen centers, which I'll talk about a little bit in just a few minutes. Last year, we were awarded a designation as one of the top three Workforce Investment Boards in the United States, as recognized by all of the Workforce Investment Boards across the country. And one of the reasons is, is because of the commitment that we have specifically in Inglewood. Inglewood is our paragon site. It is also our host city, so we are very happy to be here in Inglewood, because it gives us our modeling for what we do throughout our system. Now, if you go into one of the resource centers, that'll be the first entry point for anybody that's coming to look for a job. A lot of people at the, know us in the neighborhood. We usually see about 3,000 applicants a month at the Inglewood location, so we talk to quite a few people. How many people have been to the One Stop before? Okay, a good portion of us. And I will frequently run into employers, and I'll find people working at the, at a lot of organizations that say they have come through the One Stop in order to find their job, which makes me quite proud. Now, at the Resource Center, which is the first entry point, that's pretty much open to the public, so as long as you have identification and you can sign a code of conduct, then you can come and use the resources of the Resource Center. In the Resource Center, there's things such as resume assistance. There are also three computer labs, one dedicated for basic job searches and two for other type of development activities. There's about 40 to 50 computers that can be used for job searches that has job search information, and we also have a number of job listings all throughout the, throughout the Workforce Center. And we also have some people there that operate the center and can help you identify what your particular job type is, and they will help you specifically find leads for those types of jobs. In addition to that, there are job skills seminars of many different types, which include resume writing, interviewing skills, and also dials down into certain job types that could, that they could help with. There's also skills testing. Now, skills testing is pretty important to me. There's some things as basic as typing skills, but there's over 100 different types of skills testings that are available through the One Stop, and a lot of people are not aware of that even though they've been to the One Stop many times. Things such as Microsoft certifications, different types of office skills, the list goes on and on and on, so I encourage you to go and ask the staff there if that could be helpful. In some cases, people have been very smart. They don't wait until they're asked for those cert, you know, those type of certifications. They will go to the One Stop and get certified on something, and then that will help them when they walk into the employer to ask about a particular position. So I encourage you to ask about that as well. We also do referrals out for people to receive their diplomas, and we try to assist with people receiving other important documents and credentials to make sure that they are job-ready when they get out to the marketplace. Now, I work up on the fifth floor. Oh, I'm sorry, the Resource Center's on the third floor of the One Stop, is located at 110 South Libria Avenue, across the street from City Hall. And third floor is the Resource Center. On the fifth floor, we have intensive services. There's another section. Most of our funding is through the WIA, which is the Workforce Investment Act. It's just the act that was signed into Congress. A lot of people will remember in the past, now, I go way back, so I was a CETA kid. I don't know if anybody remembers CETA. That goes back a long time ago. So that was one of my first job experiences. Eventually, that transformed into JTPA and a lot of JTPA programs, and then it became the WIA program. And that's what allows us to be in existence as a One Stop and Workforce Center that's all throughout the United States, of which we hope that we're one of the most agile right here in Inglewood. Now, in order to be qualified for what's called intensive services, what that allows me to do is to expend a certain amount of dollars towards somebody's job, skills training by using WIA funding, which means either it's training resources or direct placement. Now, training resources, a short-term training skills or programs that are registered with us that people can take advantage of, there's probably, there's several hundred, I believe, different types of schools and training and programs throughout the, all throughout the Southern California basin here that people can take in order to get, get back to the workforce as quickly as possible. So it ranges in all job categories of all types, from construction to education, to office technology, to a number of different types of training programs that we have, we have an I-Train system that people can go in and take a look at the different types of training programs and take advantage of those. When you're registered with our program, it means that you've gone through one of the orientations and also provided the documents to become a part of it, then the One Stop pays for that training. And so some of those programs can get to be pretty pricey. Some of them can be up to $7,000 or $8,000. And so that is paid for by the One Stop when somebody is registered with that program. That's the one route that people can take. And then after that, you are given support on your job search after you exit that training. And so we're trying to make it so that there is a full service from the time that somebody enters the One Stop to the time that they are out in the marketplace and looking for work. So I work placing, trying to place those people after you exit that program. For some people that are already ready and have had some decent experience, then they go into direct placement. Now, there's still a benefit when you go into direct placement. We have what's called the on-the-job training program. So either I can have training at a, at a school, or I can have training on the job. Now, when somebody doesn't own a job training program, then they are hired permanently by that employer. Okay, so that, that's a distinction I want to make. They are hired permanently by that employer. But if that employer can provide me with a training program, then I can actually give them a wage reimbursement for that person for a particular period of time. It's usually 12 weeks. It's usually about a 50% reimbursement, and that could be very helpful in getting people out to the job site. The spirit of the program is that if somebody has transferable skills, but they need to have just a couple additional items added to their skill or experience, then we can do that actually within the confines of the job, meaning that for the first period, we know that they're not as productive, so we actually provide the dollars for them to perform that training on the site at the job. So when people ask me, "What kind of jobs do you have?" Well, that picture changes from day to day. So with that in mind, I take each individual and assess their skills and experience and try to find a position that fits them specifically. I talk a lot about, about us developing our skills individually and also the way that we display ourselves. I'm also an old sales guy, so I talk a lot about how we display ourselves in the marketplace and how we market ourselves as well, and also the questions that we ask of the employer because sometimes that will separate us as a candidate, and that's why, that's one of the things I work on with the individuals that I work with. So specifically about construction, I, that's one of my pet projects, that's my vertical, so to speak. I work in, on the construction projects in, that are related to the city or we have, we have the metro, the Metro Rail, the Crenshaw LAX line that's coming, and we also have the Hollywood Park development here. If you go outside of the jobs office here at Hollywood Park, then you'll see something that directs you to the One Stop. Every other Friday, every other Friday that we are in the office, we are off, every other Friday honor the federal system, but every other Friday, we have a construction orientation. For people that want to participate in the construction orientation, they can call the site, and they can provide a resume to us. If they don't have a resume, then we will, I will send them to the third floor and get that resume created for them so they can participate in the construction orientation. Once they participate in the construction orientation, then they can participate in an enrollment workshop so they can get enrolled in our program, and that allows me to, to work with them as an, excuse me, as an individual. I work with a partner, PV Jobs, that does construction staffing, and they have agreements with the, with the contractor for the Crenshaw LAX line in order to staff directly to that site. So we work in partnership with them, providing the front-end services that they need. And what I do is remove barriers for people to get out to the job site, which means that we actually pay for their training, and in some cases, we've given them supportive services that are very helpful. In some cases, it may be tools. In some cases, it may be boots. In some cases, it may be their, their union dues. Note to everybody, for those large commercial projects, those are union sites. So the goal of us doing this program is to get people into the union so that they'll be available for that work, and so that's extremely important. And so for some of us, some of the people have been in the union in the past, and we've actually caught up their union dues by the One Stop paying for it, and then getting people out to the job site so that they can work and remove that barrier. And so that's one of the things that we do by people registering for this program. We also work a lot with the, with the airport, working on, working with a number of carriers at the airport specifically in customer service. We work with CMS Food Services, Gate Gourmet, Hunt in the USA, which does private charter flights, G2 Services, APS Services, and Primetime Shuttle. Those are just some of the folks that we have worked with in the past in order to get staffing out to some of the jobs at the airport. There's a lot of growth around there, and I want to make sure that our residents are able to participate in all the growth that's happening at the airport as well. For our small businesses, there may be a couple of small business owners in the room, there's a particular benefit that the One Stop provides to businesses as well, that the on-the-job training program opens up an opportunity. It can be very helpful because that reimbursement is available, makes your employees cheaper to acquire, also makes sure that they're much better trained. So I've had some, I've given some of our companies a check for $120,000 because they've taken advantage of our programs and set up a special program, program using the on-the-job training program. And so that is money found, it's a cost savings, and the way that I've been taught is that cost savings go directly to the bottom line, which means it's 100% yours. Okay, so that's one of the things I want to bring up if we have any small businesses in the room. I also have people that will do a lot of activities as a small business at the One Stop, which means actually doing their interviews at the One Stop, also their trainings. I've had a lot of people come to the office and take, take advantage of our, our space. We have rooms that hold up to 80, 85 persons, and they've actually performed their training at the One Stop, and that, that is all under our charter of improving our workforce. So that is possible as well. I'd like to talk a little bit about youth services. I don't work in that division, but I am aware of it, and I want to just explain a couple of things that were given to me by our youth services department, specifically the teen centers. We happen to have a teen center here in Inglewood, which I find fantastic. It is at the bottom floor of the Inglewood Library. That's 101 West Manchester, I believe. Generally speaking, that teen center is open from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and some of the services that they offer at the teen center are tutoring and homework assistance and array of academic support. There are also games, games and extracurricular activities of all types. At one of the teen centers, I saw them working on a mural of Bob Marley with the, where about 20, 25 different teens collaborated on it. It was absolutely beautiful work, and that was something that kept them occupied and kept them off, off of the streets. Okay, there are also a lot of fun group activities. They do, they do trips to Dodger games and also some of the amusement parks. That's something that's available through, to them, through the teen center. And I'd just like to tell you one small story to close up. So the, I was at one of the teen centers, this is before I started working at the One Stop, I was on the Board of Directors for the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, so I did a meeting at one of our teen center locations. And there was a 12-year-old girl that came to the teen center, and the coordinator at the teen center was not even aware that she had come in. She came to one of the computers, and she sat down, and she wrote out a resume on her own because she felt that she needed to work. In her cover letter, she'd explained that her parents were getting ready to lose her home, and she wanted to work in order to try to help her family at least stay in their home. She figured out how to do a resume, found some examples, and created the resume on her own, and she described her volunteer work that she did at her school as possible job skills that she could offer to the employer. It was very well done. She had an objective, she had her, the time, the amount of time that she spent at, working in the school, and it was, it was absolutely fantastic. She did all of that on her own. I'd just like to bring that up because there's a certain amount of inspiration that comes from just having that environment and having the teen center available for, to service people. And I'm going to close up with that. I welcome everybody to come to the teen center, and thanks a lot for listening to me today.
A couple questions?
Yes, sir.
What is your, what is your, what is your, what is your projected outlook for the employment this next fiscal year? What is current fiscal? Based on your...
Can you repeat the question? We don't have the mic.
Yes, he, he asked, "What is the projection over the next fiscal year of unemployment?" I'm just, just assuming the overall picture. I, I find that it's, there is a certain amount of comeback in, in jobs, although the jobs have narrowed somewhat. And then also, my, my biggest concern is about, about wages. And so that's one of the reasons why I'll talk a lot of people about adding additional skills so that they can expand on what they're able to do. So a lot of employers are doing more with less, so we will have a lot of additions back into the marketplace as people start getting more contracts and things of that nature to base, to, to hire people. However, we have to be more skilled and more savvy at what we do and also be prepared for changes. The only constant will be change in the marketplace from here on out. So even if you're sitting in a particular position, you're going to be asked to do more, and you'd be asked to do it faster and with more, more skills that you have to have available. And so hopefully, the One Stop can help with that.
Okay, any other question? Yes, sir. Where is your?
Yes, sir.
We'll get the mic. Just a second. Get the mic. There you go.
Yes, as Chairman of Park and Recreation in the city of Inglewood and a regular at Chili's on Century Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
For eight years. I want to commend you people, One Stop, for what you did, you've done for youngsters that work at Chili's, Red Lobster, the whole shopping center. It, it is fantastic. I tell you, you, you know, as a person that go there every day and, and know every, every employee in Chili's, and they know me, you've done so much. You know, I can only say, keep up the good work, and I want to thank my Councilman Franklin for inviting you because this is something that people really need to know about. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Let's give him a hand if you would, please. Did you have any, did you have any...
Oh, yeah. You have a key?
Yeah, I just asked, because, did you guys, are you getting any good information today? Did you enjoy his presentation? I asked him to give us some phone numbers, something you can do outreach. So he's going to do that now.
Okay, everybody got the location. There are also brochures outside for, for both the One Stop and also the teen center. So there are brochures out on the table outside. The phone number is 310-680-3700. Now, registration for the WIA program happens on the first business day of the month. You call in and you're put on the list. It is on a first-come, first-served basis. So if you call in on the first day, and then they invite you back to the orientation on a, in a subsequent week. So the first of the month is when we call in in order to get on that list. We open at 8:00 AM. Be one of the first people to call when that, when the 8:00 AM hits.
First come, first served. We have one more comment or question worth a call.
Somebody call you direct?
Yes, ma'am. Same phone number, you can call me direct. I'm in room 508 at the One Stop on the fifth floor.
There you go. All right, give him another hand if you would, please. Please give him a hand. Okay, as I share with you that I've asked for one other speaker to, to join us because time is of the essence, so if you've still got your pens handy and your paper to do some writing, you're going to need to make some serious notes. But before I do that, I also want to recognize my colleague because when you work on the council, it's very critical that we have a cohesive team, have visions that will help benefit you and your quality of life, and also for the future, as we just talked about. Again, as I stressed, the theme of today's presentation is the best preparation for our future is the, is the present. And so please help me recognize my colleague on the council commissioner, I'm sorry, council member, George Dotson from District One. He's been, he's been a commissioner for the planning commission for over a decade, so I'm still trying to work on this, on his new title. Again, George has worked with me exclusively on a number of issues because his boundary lines north of Century affects our boundary line south of Century off of Crenshaw. So we have a number of joint efforts together, and in fact, my colleague will appreciate the next presenter because I've asked for them to reach out to you next, Councilman, because we're now going to be talking about the Century Boulevard. Everybody know where Century Boulevard is? All right, so I think you need to know this. Please help me recognize from the Southern California Gas Company, Lizette Carbajal.
Good morning. So we were last minute at, but actually quite timely. We met with the Councilman a couple days, actually, yeah, a couple days ago. I'm Lizette Carbajal, I'm with Southern California Gas Company, and I'm actually here on behalf of Mike Harriel, who is your local Public Affairs Manager for the city of Inglewood. We are actually going to embark on a project where we are replacing our natural gas pipeline that actually runs down Crenshaw Boulevard. So what we are doing, just to give you a little bit of background, is that pipeline actually runs through various cities, beginning in the border of Torrance, moving through Hawthorne, Gardena into Inglewood, and then the portion that we're looking at would, would end in the Hyde Park area, city of LA. The portion that we're looking at within the city of Inglewood actually stretches along the city, from the city limits, beginning at, you know, around the 105 all the way into the morning, Morningside Park area. We are looking to replace that pipeline beginning in September of this year to be completed by November. The way that we anticipate that, so there'll be traffic impacts to that, that stretch, it would be moving, crews moving in about 200-foot increments up Crenshaw Boulevard. So it will, there'll be congestion, traffic. We're working with the city to look at what the traffic control plans will be for that portion, so we wanted to really leverage this opportunity to create some awareness that that's a project that is coming. What we would like to do is move into, and actually, if there's any community forums, neighborhood groups, so that we can go out and brief you all and provide some more details. But I did want to just highlight that this is an infrastructure project that is necessary part of our pipeline enhancement plan, and this particular pipeline is one of many throughout our service area that we're looking to work on over the course of the, of the next few years. So I wanted to highlight that and just, I know that we're short on time, but if there's any questions, but there'll be additional information coming to you regarding the actual details. Any questions? Yes.
What number of, oh, did you want to come to our block?
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. When's the project going to start?
Oh, in terms of date, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. The project we're looking to start at early September and complete by November, so it's about 10 to 12 weeks.
What was the destination location for the...
It's all along Crenshaw Boulevard and beginning at the, from city, city limits, so beginning from the 105 all the way through city of LA.
So from the 105 freeway on the south, all the way through north past Florence, actually 59th Street in the city of Los Angeles.
Yep.
So it's coming all the way through the entire city of Inglewood on Crenshaw Boulevard.
Yes, so we, another project that we do have at a gas company is the Advanced Meter Project, and that's where we're upgrading our gas meters so that they can read remotely. So that installation process is underway in various cities, and what that involves is it's less than a 10-minute upgrade on your existing meter, where we're adding a communication device to allow us to remotely collect the information and provide it to you on a, on a real... and provide it to you on a, on a real-time basis.
Will that new meter have the capability to shut off for earthquake?
Uh, no, it won't have any remote turn-on or turn-off capability. It's just the meter reading function and the gas usage.
Is it absolutely necessary that we have the earthquake shut-off valve?
Um, the earthquake shut-off valve, from a SoCal gas perspective, I can actually give you more information on that and where to, to get, if you call our call center. Um, and I have a flyer outside of, on the, the table that's outside where you can get some additional information. And we have our general one eight hundred number so that you can get in to contact. We're replacing our existing pipelines. So, there is a pipeline that goes, um, that's been there, and based off of new standards, new federal standards, we're going through and upgrading portions of our pipeline throughout our entire system. So, this particular one, it is an existing pipeline that we're replacing.
So, literally saying the pipe is just gonna be shut off, a new pipe will be installed.
I understand there was an upgrade, you know, something that...
Yeah.
Well, upgrade to me was just, they're just gonna improve currently what they have, but actually gonna do a complete replacement. And that's why it's gonna disrupt the flow of the traffic, particularly a lane or two on Crenshaw Boulevard. One more comment, and then we have to go. Yeah.
Yeah, I just needed an email address to invite you to our homeowners association rather than a phone number if you have it.
Oh, sure, sure. It's L-C-A-R, B as in boy, A-J-A-L, at sembrautilities.com.
Okay. Okay, let's give her a hand if you would please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, as I met with him earlier, like you said, a couple of days ago, I felt it was important enough that you give advanced knowledge, we're talking about transparency, you give advanced knowledge about how it's gonna impact, impact your quality of life and may cause you to consider other options as you wanna travel to and fro throughout the city and throughout, throughout the Southern California. You still have your pads and pens handy? All right, I also ask for you to keep in mind for upcoming events, anyone knows W.G. Howard, our Commissioner of Construction Appeals Board? He's also the block club captain of Chanera Avenue between one hundred and Ninth Street and Atkinson Avenue. And that, at that block club, we're gonna have the South Bay Environmental Service Center representative that's gonna be there. And I encourage you to make a visit on Chanera Avenue on August the sixteenth, that's Saturday, August sixteenth, between the hours of one to six PM. Because the representative that will be there on behalf of the South Bay Environmental Service Center will be talking about discounts with Southern California Gas and Southern California Edison on income quality-based energy savings programs, as well as those individuals that are dealing with medical baseline issues on how you can get a discount, a reduction of your regular monthly bills for Southern California Gas and Southern California Edison. So, please make a note of that. Uh, I've also been requested by one of my strong groups in my district to make a quick comments regarding things involving the District Four. And I wanna identify, the Alliance Group has been very supportive of me and this community of doing things that we normally wouldn't do. These are the individuals that actually will roll up their sleeves, and they will actually get in front of prostitutes, hold up banners and signs and said, "You're not welcome here." They will go door to door to businesses to discourage them from wanting prostitutes to engage in activity with their clients or customers and put up signs in their business windows. They're also the same ones that will walk with me and work with me on removing graffiti off of utility poles, off of curbs, off of sidewalks. They are the hidden soldiers that I want you to publicly see. Please help me recognize Maria Smiten and the Alliance Group. Maria.
This is Inglewood.
This is my, our city. Well, we wasn't in an agenda because we like to give you surprise to our Councilman. And thank you so much for everything. I would like to recognize Councilman with this beautiful plaque.
Oh, my.
For everything that he do and continue work with us and support our community. Thank you so much, Councilman.
God bless you.
I, I told that I'm gonna take two minutes.
English.
Oh, English, all right.
So, pretty much what it says, it says, "To a very special person, Ralph L. Franklin, Councilman from District Four, with gratitude for the qualities that make you so special, for the rare and priceless courage that takes you where others dare not go, for the concern and conviction that inspires you, this expression of thanks is made with warmest appreciation and respect." And this is from the Alliance Community Group, and then it has July twenty-six, twenty fourteen.
Wow, thank you. Thank you. Come on, boss, talk.
We just wanna continue our gratitude to you for marching out there with us as well and supporting us through thick and thin, and water, and oil, and we keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, I, I just wanna make a brief comment, 'cause I, you want to talk some more, Ms. Smiten? I just wanna make a brief comment because I was with them last night. And they said we weren't gonna talk business. But it was interesting that we were recapping some of the things that we've been working on throughout the years. And as you know, prostitution hasn't gone away. And so, we were just coming up with other strategies on what we're gonna do to go, again, when you have new pimps, you have new prostitutes. And so, we're working on strategy on how we're gonna address that. When you have gang bangers that are still coming in our community, and, and they're not dying away as well, we come up with strategies on what we're gonna do in order to remove the graffiti off the sidewalks and curbs and, and the utility poles. We do not have enough staff to keep up with that. Here are residents of District Four, city of Inglewood, saying that we're here to make a difference. We want you to join us. Because we're, it's all about our quality of life. And all the things we've been talking about today is quality of life. So, I, again, I wanna commend you, and I thank you, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work and do my fair share in our community. Any other comments?
I just wanna mention that we actually are not just District Four. We do spread out all the way through Inglewood and as well as Lenox Boundaries. Um, I think that's why we're pretty strong. So, uh, anybody who wants to join, anytime we have our community outreach stuff, go ahead, you know? We're all welcome.
So, you just heard him, crime has no boundaries. But they're still in District Four. Let's give him a hand if you would please. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Truly, I'm honored. I think it's great when you get these surprises like that, and how, here we were talking last night about issues of, of quality of life, and then all of a sudden, they said nothing to me. And then I get, my boss tells me, who's my boss? Mrs. Franklin. She says, uh, somebody wants to make a few comments. I say, yes, ma'am. So, we all have bosses, you as elects. Uh, I, I'm elected by you, and so, as a consequence, you're my bosses. So, I work as much as I can to handle as much issues as I can. Fernando, you have a comment or question?
I have one more question.
Yes.
You know, uh, I noticed a person... Thank you. Um, I noticed, you know, a lot of persons put a, uh, signs when go to the yard sales.
Yes.
And we supposed to go to the city hall and get a permit and everything to get it, to do the, um, yard sale. But I noticed, you know, everybody go put the signs and the poles and the walls and everywhere to make it a yard sale. But after this person do the yard sale, never go back and remove the sign. And I don't think so that's good, you know, for the city and for all residents. Because I don't like, you know, see papers in, in front of my trees and the poles and everywhere. So, I think, you know, people haven't, has to have a respect for everybody else and go and pick, pick it up or remove or take it.
This is Fernando Mesa, who's also been one of our regular, uh, community activists. And so, I will take heart what you just said, particularly with the unwanted signage that goes up for yard sales, and then the lack of respect of removing them after the event. City of Inglewood does allow a resident to have two yard sales per year, but you gotta pull a permit at no charge, but you gotta pull a permit to make sure that they do, in fact, stay in compliance. We wanna circumvent people making it a business, and that's why we restrict it to only two. Now, I wanna get to my final presenter because it's something that is called hands-on experience. So, if you looked at the agenda, you will see that I'm here to talk about the search program for those getting prepared for quality of life, saving lives. And then also, we're gonna actually have, right in front of you, we're gonna have CPR demonstrations, where you are gonna participate on how to provide CPR hands-on. So, please help me, our neighbor, who, if you know where one hundred and Eighth and Crenshaw is, a fire station? Please help me recognize Captain Brent Burton and his team. Captain Burton, please. Give him a hand.
Well, good afternoon. I wanna thank Councilman Franklin for inviting the fire department here. Usually, you call nine-one-one and we show up, right? That's how you get us someplace. So, what we have is our crew is setting up some mannequins because we have about, let's see, six plus one. So, we're gonna let five folks have a chance to come up and actually do CPR. Now, this won't be a CPR certification through the American Heart Association, but it will be a hands-on opportunity for you all to learn how to do CPR and get the feel for it. Because what we found is that if somebody goes down from a heart attack and CPR is not initiated right away, that person's chances of surviving are very, very slim. Very slim. Um, so like Captain, uh, Councilman Franklin mentioned, I'm Captain Brent Burton from the LA County Fire Department. To my immediate left is my boss, Battalion Chief Bob Haskell. He's here today in place of Chief Henry Rodriguez. Uh, next to him is my, one of my engineers, Adrian Garola, firefighter Jack Heisman. And the gentlemen in the light blue shirts are Explorer Scouts. And I'll talk about the Explorer program in a second, but Explorers usually are young men and women between the ages of fifteen through twenty-one that are trying to become firefighters. And so, we have Edward Lucas, a graduate, recent graduate of Inglewood High School. We have Engineer Louis Gonzalez, who will be just demonstrating our hands-on CPR. And for those of you that are Spanish-speaking only, uh, let us know, and Louis can also translate. And then next to him is Explorer Tykeen Brown, a recent graduate of Morningside High School. And we have firefighter Johnny Sanchez, who is our Explorer advisor. He's in charge of all the Explorers. And on the very end is paramedic Nate Jackson. Now, Nate looks like he's about twelve, but he's actually twenty-eight years old. Has a real baby face. So, uh, Fire Station one seventy, we're at one oh eighth and Crenshaw, we're the local fire station for District Four. How many of you live south of Imperial Highway, uh, between Imperial and one oh five? Okay, for those of you that live in that section of town, Fire Station one sixty-two, they're at one twentieth and Crenshaw, uh, right next to the airport, that is your local fire station. But if you're between Imperial and Century and Prairie and Van Ness, all the way to Wilton Place, then we are your local fire station. Now, I'm not sure how many of you know about the fire department and how we work, but we're, we are a twenty-four hour business. We never close. We're twenty-four seven, we're always there. If we're not in the stations, we're on those fire trucks in the district someplace, either handling a call or handling some type of business. And we are your fire station. Um, if you come to the fire station to report an emergency and we're not in there, there's a red phone right on the front of the station next to the door of our office. You can just open that phone up, and as soon as you pick it up, it automatically rings down to our dispatch center, actually goes to Inglewood PD first, and then they can handle your emergency from there. Now, I noticed that some of you might've grabbed the flyers that look like this, that has Inglewood Government Telephone Directory and also some emergency hotline numbers. I'm gonna give you a number to write down. So, instead of where it says fire, police, medical, emergency, everybody knows nine-one-one, right? But because of the way the phone system works, depending on where you're calling from or where your phone area code is based out of, your nine-one-one call may go directly to the CHP. If you go to CHP, then they have to figure out where you are, where your location is, and get you the right people to help you. So, I'm gonna give you the ten-digit phone number that rings directly to our fire department dispatch center, okay? So, you ready? All right, the number is three two three, area code, eight eight one, two four five five. Three two three, eight eight one, two four five five. Uh, I highly recommend that you program that number into your cell phone in big, bold letters, fire department or a fire emergency. And when you need the fire department or the paramedics, 'cause we do both, uh, you'll ring right to our dispatch center. You'll bypass all the other dispatchers, 'cause right now, if you call from home, it goes to the local law enforcement first. And they'll say, "Nine-one-one, what's your emergency?" "I need the paramedics." "Okay, stand by." And then they do a ring down, and it goes right to our dispatch center. But we wanna eliminate all the middlemen we can and let you go right to our dispatchers and get the help right away. That's what we recommend. All of us have those same numbers programmed in our cell phones, because if we're off-duty and we see an emergency, we're gonna go right to our phones, fire department, and right now, we're talking to our dispatchers and telling what we got, and that way, help them get there a lot sooner. The Inglewood Government Telephone number's here, it says fire department, and they list three fire stations that are based in the city. So, Fire Station one seventy is our station, that's the one, uh, direct number. That's for non-emergency phone calls. So, if you have a question about a fire hazard or a fire prevention matter, or just wanna know, you know, what do you guys do at ten at night, you know, on Christmas, while we're sleeping? That's probably what we're doing. Then you can call us and we can answer your questions. Anything not emergency, uh, emergency-related, then you wanna call nine-one-one for that. Sometimes we have people call the station directly and say, "Well, it's not really emergency, but my smoke detector's going off, I don't know why." Well, that's an emergency. You call us and we'll come out and investigate it. You know, I hear, uh, "I smell natural gas leaking, uh, can you guys come by and check it out? That's an emergency. Call nine-one-one, we'll be dispatched." The problem, if you call the fire station and just want us to come by to check something out, the problem is, we can say, "Okay, we'll hang up," and we'll say, "We're on our way." And if we just casually drive over there because you don't think it's an emergency, we can get dispatched to another call right away. Because we have an old saying in our department, we can be anywhere in twenty minutes. Anytime, those radios that we have are always on, and we're always available. We're available right this minute. So, if a call comes in, depending on the type of call, either all of us will go or some of us will go right now. So, we want you to call nine-one-one, tell us what's going on, and that way, we'll be dispatched, which means we'll be only available to handle your situation. So, we understand that? Pretty clear? Don't apologize for calling us. People always apologize. That's what we're here for. We're here for you. Because without you, we don't have a job. That's what we look at. You are job security. The more calls you call us on, we got a job. Because pretty soon, we don't want anybody else taking our jobs. So, you call us if there's something else going on. The way we looked at it, if it doesn't take a gun to handle, that's what the cops do. The cops have, anything with bad people and guns, that's what they do. Anything else, the fire department does. We're jacks-of-all-trades, a master of quite a few of them. All right? Um, also, on the front, you'll see, um, there's a flyer that says, "Summer Pancake Breakfast." There's a flyer that's gonna be out front. We just got here and put those flyers out. We're gonna try to raise some money for our Explorers because for the uniforms that these young folks wear and the academy they go through to get trained, uh, costs some funds. And also to do something with them. Um, so, we're gonna have a pancake breakfast on Saturday, August the second, from nine to noon, at Fire Station one seventy-one, which is right across from City Hall. That's a big fire station there. That's where the pancake breakfast be held. And all the proceeds go to the Explorers, and it's only five bucks. Five bucks, get pancakes, you can meet the firefighters, have pancakes with the firefighters and Explorers, and have a good time. Okay? Uh, one other thing, actually, a few other things for you. Is that my time up? Anybody heard of the Safe Surrender Program? Okay. Safe Surrender Program is for when you have a child that's newborn. In the old days... You get kinda nervous, think something's gonna blow up, you know, so... Yeah, you have to go out and get our gear and come back and put it out. Um, the Safe Surrender Program is for a newborn that's seventy-two years of age, seventy, I'm sorry, seventy-two hours. Seventy-two hours. Seventy-two hours or less. You can bring the newborn to the fire station or to an emergency room for, from a hospital, and we'll take care of the child. Over seventy-two hours, you know, you can't bring your five-year-old and say, "Here, take him, I can't deal with him." We won't do that. You can't take, bring your twelve-year-old down there, you know? So, seventy-two hours or less, a safe surrender situation. At our fire station, I could think of only one that we've had in the last ten years since the program's been up and running, where a woman actually brought a newborn to this, to the station. It was, uh, her niece that delivered this child, and she took the, the, um, the baby to the fire station. And what we do is we call our paramedic unit, they come from Station one seventy-three at Ninetieth and Crenshaw. They come down with an ambulance, and we transport the child to the nearest pediatric care center. In this case, it's actually Harvard General Hospital. And they notify Department of Children and Family Services, and they take the child, and they put him in custody of a foster care, uh, family. So, that's what happens. In the old days, folks used to unfortunately deliver children and find them where? In the trash cans, right? And so to prevent that from happening, we started the, actually Supervisor Don Kenaby, it's actually his bearing child, he put this together, and partnered with the fire department and also local emergency rooms, and so we have that program, there's a pamphlet about that. Councilman Franklin also mentioned the CERT training. How many of you have actually gone through the CERT program before? Okay, very good. We're gonna start another CERT class on August 5th, Tuesday, and there's also CERT flyers out front, they look like this. It's gonna be a seven-week training, uh, every Tuesday night and Thursday night at Inglewood, the community center room and city hall. And so myself and some of my colleagues will be the instructors there, and it's a seven-week program, it's free. And what we do is teach you about basic first aid, how to use a fire extinguisher, basic safety for earthquakes, and how to make yourself more, uh, fire-safe and earthquake-ready and prepared, and that's what we do there. It's a great program, we've trained quite a few people countywide, and Los Angeles is where this whole program started, now it's a nationwide program. And the more people that are trained, the better, because in the event of a natural emergency, the plain truth is this, don't depend on 911, because number one, the phone lines probably won't work, and number two, if you do get through, we're not coming, because we have so many people that we have to care for and respond to. You may be very lucky if we show up and help you, but there's so many folks that are gonna need us, we are in the wind. I was working the day the Northridge earthquake happened in 1994, at one station I was assigned to, we had 17 calls, and we were just running all across town, and that was up in Hollywood. So we, um, want the public to be able to fend for themselves, take care of themselves, and the whole idea is, within 72-hours, you're gonna be probably on your own. And so you'll have to kinda figure some things out, and this CERT class is the way to help you do that. So we wanna encourage you to sign up for that class, it's free, can't beat that, right? Uh, it's free training, and again, Tuesday, August 5th is the first class, and all the registration information is on there. Also we have out front is a home safety inspection checklist, that's out front also. Because what we find is, a lot of times, most of our calls are medically related. You know, people think of the fire department, think of fires. Well, fires are only less than 10% of what we do. So we have all the red trucks, we're highly trained, we have gear that weighs 60 pounds we have to wear every time we go into a burning building, but the, most of the time that you'll see a fire truck or a fire engine going down the street, we're usually going to a medical call. Anything related with heart attacks, seizures, people can't breathe, traffic accidents, things like that, people just, you know, hypertensive crisis, which means they're having high blood pressure, it's really giving them a headache, they can't see, we're called for that. So when you dial 911 for the paramedics, we are the paramedics. All of our firefighters are highly trained, we're all EMTs, and one of our firefighters is always assigned to our crew as a paramedic, so we can get to you, uh, within five minutes, 95% of the time, to take care of your problem. The most common question we get is, "How come when I call the fire, the paramedics, the fire truck shows up? Why is that?" But we're not gonna bring the ladder in the water for you, we're not there for that. We're there because in one specific compartment on our rig, we have nothing but first aid equipment. There it goes again. So we wanna make sure that we get to you in a timely manner, we have a first aid box, we have a defibrillator, we have oxygen, and we have trained folks that can help you out, okay? So, so when you see the, uh, fire truck show up, don't be alarmed, the paramedics are coming also, and a lot of times, we are the paramedics, okay? You know Councilman Franklin's gonna regulate that, isn't he? He's gonna help you, help you out with that. Okay, um, anything else we need to talk about? Block clubs. Uh, how many block club presidents are here in the room? See, one, two, three, four. Okay. You should get to know who we are, and we should get to know you. Uh, I know Fourth Avenue Block Club, uh, and the avenues, we've spoken to them quite a few times, I think Fifth Avenue, uh, we wanna come talk to you. So make sure you kind of connect with us, because we wanna come out and do these presentations to your clubs and be more personable about it. Uh, we, we speak to clubs all the time, we give you a lot of personal information, we can do a home inspection right there and demonstrate certain things for you, answer any questions you have, so we want you to make sure that you know that we're part of the community and we live there, okay? Uh, by the way, I've been here at this station for 14 years, and Louis has been with me for the last 12 of those 14 years, so we've been together in this community for a long time. Adrian was a firefighter here, he promoted engineer and came back, so we're here because we wanna come here. Nobody is sent to Inglewood, understand that. This is not a punishment place. This is a station, this is a location that people are trying to get into, trying to get into work here, because this is a great community, it's a great city, uh, there's a lot of activity here, and so a lot of folks come to Inglewood voluntarily, nobody is sent here. If anything, we kick people out. We don't kick them in, so that's how it works. Okay, so we want, who wants to learn CPR? Okay, you don't wanna learn it? You may have to use it one day. You can't use it on yourself, you have to use it somebody else, okay?
I got my card right there.
Got your card, very good. So, what we're gonna do, we have five spaces right here, and we need five volunteers to come up. Don't be shy. Okay, there's one.
Come on up, this is the time to learn.
Don't be afraid, we don't bite. We're not gonna, it's not gonna be a quiz. Okay, there we go. Okay, so Engineer Gonzalez, he's getting mic'd up right now, what he's going to do is demonstrate the sidewalk, we call this sidewalk CPR. And sidewalk CPR is just a quick, down-and-dirty on how to do CPR properly, but understand, this is not a CPR certification. After you do this for like two minutes, you're not gonna get a card, okay? The real CPR is done by the American Heart Association or the Red Cross, they do a full two-day training, that's how it works. Okay, we got enough people here? Okay, very good. All right. Okay.
Are we good?
So, Engineer Gonzalez is gonna go ahead and demonstrate how we do CPR.
Sit right here.
Okay, Lou.
Can you guys hear me? Hear me?
Okay.
This is fairly easy, so once we demonstrate it, you're gonna wanna come up and do this. Remember, the mannequins are up on top of the table, it's not where you're actually gonna do CPR, the person's usually on the floor, so that's the better place to train you, but because of, uh, certain people, they'll be a lot easier to demonstrate up on top of the table. When the person's down, what you wanna do is shake and shout. Come up closer here, you can put your head close to their mouth to see if they're breathing. If they're not moving at all, if they're not breathing, then you wanna look up to anybody that's around you and tell them to go call 911, okay? So anybody around you, you just tell them, "Please go call 911." Get your, to the palm of your hand, your strong hand, which is your right hand, if your left hand, it's your left hand. So your strong hand, you'll put it over between the nipple line, you see the nipple line right there? You'll get your, your other hand, and you get your other hand, you're interlocked, and you'll keep your elbows straight and locked this way, and you're gonna compress two inches, and you're gonna do 100 in one minute, okay? After 100 in one minute, then you're going to show somebody else that's in the room and switch, and they'll do it for 100. Does that sound simple? Simple enough? Okay, you're not gonna do any breathing for the person, it's all compression that you're gonna do. So we shake and shout, don't hear it, you don't feel anything, tell somebody, "Call 911." Get your hand in between the nipple line, lock, lock your, uh, your fingers in and compress two inches, 100 times, okay? And you keep doing that to ALS, which is our Advanced Life Support, which is us, 911, the fire department and the paramedics, come up and see, okay? Be one more person to come up, you, 'cause I can see you're just dying to come up here. Come on up here.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. Okay. So what do we do? We come up here, and what do we do first? What do we do first? Shake and shout?
I have to take me.
Come on up.
I'll do English as well.
Yeah, it's Spanish.
So, so just so everyone understands, this is the final presenter, so we encourage you to come and participate in the CPR training, but if you have to go to someplace else, that's fine, but this is the last presenter, be sure to take all the information that